Hey Maggie.
How's it going?
Good, thanks for coming.
My pleasure.
We're about to go live on the Facebook.
Okay.
Hopefully it works lol.
Thanks for moving the time so people could come from council.
Oh yes, oh, thank you for coming and we're happy to reschedule if if folks can make it.
Yeah.
Alright, going live. Woohoo. Get all the folks coming into the meeting. Woohoo.
Hello. Good morning, oh my video. Okay, there.
Hi Viviana.
Hello.
Look at all these lovely faces.
I know. Sandy just emailed me, he said he's gonna be a little bit late.
Okay, cool. That is no trouble, I'm just getting the live post ready anyway. Hello everyone. Oh, can everybody hear my typing like super loud and obnoxiously a little bit? I'll just mute. Alright, we're live. Woo. Alright, I guess while we wait for our friend Sandy, we can go do a go through a very quick round of introductions, just like your name and what brought you here. Because there are quite a few of us, we don't have a whole lot of time, but we are still waiting on one of our participants. So we might as well, I guess I'll start, I'm Leah, I am the volunteer coordinator for the Social Justice Cooperative, which I will introduce in slightly more detail once we officially start. I will hand it off to the next person on my list here, which is Carrie.
Hi everyone, my name is, can y'all hear me, sorry, I think my, okay. My name is Carrie Claire Neal, I'm the co-chair for the Social Justice Cooperative, and a big cyclist and walker in the city, and really excited about the potential of the Kelly's Brook Trail and would love to see it go forward and excited to see so many people here today who want to see more safe cycling and multi-purpose trails nursing.
Wonderful, thank you Carrie, next up Debbie.
Hi, I'm Debbie, I'm with the Social Justice Co-op also and with the Green Party, and I feel the same way, I'm really excited to see this go forward.
Awesome, Mark.
Hi, I'm Mark, I'm also with the Social Justice Cooperative, but I'm more here today out of personal interest because nine months of the year, my main mode of getting around is bicycle, and the city's not really a safe place for that at present. So this issue of Kelly's Brook's multi-purpose trail is is part of what I want to see for the whole city, so that's why I'm here today.
Wonderful, thank you Mark, next up Viviana.
Hello everyone, thank you so much for being here, this is very exciting. Also part of the social justice, the Zero Waste Action Team and the Challenging Car Culture. And my main interest today is to learn about decision-making in council. And language too, which I think has been part of the confusion, but very interesting exchange of emails between some councillors and our group.
Thank you Viviana, Asia.
Hi everyone, my name is Asia Holloway, I use she and her pronouns. I'm part of the Social Justice Co-op and the Challenging Car Culture Coalition. And yeah, similar to Viviana, I'm here to kind of learn a bit more about everything that's really been happening, there has been a little bit of like mixed messaging and confusion, so I am excited to hear people's perspectives and opinions, but also get some some clarity.
Wonderful, thank you Asia, Ben. Ben, would you like to introduce yourself? You're still on mute there. Okay, let's skip Ben for now and go to Elizabeth.
Good morning. Ben, since we can't see or hear you, I'm not sure what's happening, but you should have a little mute microphone icon at the lower left of your screen. If you want to speak when Leah comes back to you, you can just click it and it will turn green from red. I believe that's right, that's how it is on mine anyway. So I'm Elizabeth Yeoman and I'm part of the Challenging Car Culture Group and just generally very interested in active transportation. I've been walking and riding around this city for a long time and thinking a lot about this issue. So I'm really looking forward to this discussion this morning and I think we will learn more. So yeah, nice to see you all here.
Thanks Elizabeth, and next Hope.
Hello, good morning, I'm Hope Jameson, I'm councillor for Ward 2, also interested in countering car culture and so that's Viviana asked me to be here, so that's why I'm here. I just does whatever she tells me.
Thank you Hope, John.
Hi everyone, I'm John Weber, so he/him pronouns, and I'm a member of the Social Justice Co-op and the smaller Challenged Car Culture Coalition. And I walk a lot, I cycle a lot, I'm an avid cyclist, so I'm just really interested in issues about safety and just more access for cyclists in the city and surrounding areas. So that's, and I'm here to learn about, you know, what's what's going to happen with this plan specifically about Kelly's Brook Trail.
Thanks John. Who is next Maggie?
Good morning everybody, thank you for hosting this space today. This is an issue that, you know, myself and a lot of other people care about and happy to see, you know, everybody come out in support of bicycles. I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, well, I'm just here because I guess Leah asked me to come and I look forward to see the conversation and we'll be debating it in council again at 3pm today, so it won't be long before we have more conversation about this. So thank you.
Thank you Maggie, Megan.
My name is Megan Holish, I am a part of Happy City St. John's, as well part of the Challenging Car Culture Group, which is a part of the Social Justice Coalition as well. It's great to see so many familiar faces and much appreciation for everybody that has helped organize this today. I'm a bike user, I'm a car user, I get around multiple different ways, different times of the year. And I definitely want to see the city really make a way for active transportation to be embedded as as a reliable way to get around this city for everybody.
Awesome, thanks Megan, let's go next to Ryan, Ryan Green.
Hello everybody, thanks for organizing. My name is Ryan Green, I'm on the board for NL, also an avid cyclist, recreational cyclist, commuter. I do a lot of walking around the downtown area, fairly passionate about this topic, looking to communicate and get some more tips on advocacy and how we can move this project forward. So yeah, thanks for organizing.
Thank you for coming, we'll go next to Sarah Studley.
Hello everyone, I'm Sarah Studley, I'm MHA from Mount Syo, so includes a portion of the trail. I heard about this early this morning on the radio, so good job whoever doing the communications, yay. So I looked up, I thought I should join, I was speaking with the councillor Ian Fradd about this last week. So I've been involved in the project applications and approvals for the Town of Paradise and the city of St. John's. And I actually, actually from my perspective, hadn't heard about this particular project, whether it was approved or not. So I'm trying to dig in with Minister Bragg's office, he's the Minister of Municipal Affairs and the Environment, and his office, my understanding is coordinates the approvals for these projects, which are somewhat funded by the municipality, partially funded by the province, partially funded by the federal government. So I'm trying to figure out where that is, so I'll let you guys know as soon as I find that out, although councillor Hickman probably knows. And so I guess, yeah, just trying to help and if there's anything I can add happy to or I think I can investigate, let me know, but again, I'd love to see this project go forward and if there's anything the province can do, I'm certainly here to help move that forward, thank you.
Thank you Sarah, Sophie.
Sophie Wells, she/her, and I'm part of the Social Justice Co-op, Zero Waste Action Team, whatever action team's on the go at the time, I just show up because Viviana told me to as well. Really want to know more about the organization of of how this is going forward and yeah, clarity on what different councillors are saying and why.
Wonderful, thank you Sophie, Michael Seymour.
Hi yeah, my name's Mike, I'm an avid cyclist, I commute back and forth to work. I also compete in bike races, road biking, I do a lot of gravel biking, cycloprob biking. So I moved here about a year ago and I'm interested in increasing bike accessibility through the city.
Wonderful, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
We'll go next Debbie, did I miss you? Debbie Weisman? Did I miss you or did you introduce yourself already? You're good, let's go to David Brayk, who just joined us.
Hi, I'm also a member of Happy Cities, keen cyclist, and I've been following what's been going on in the council for a while. And yeah, I wanted to see, learn a little more about the thinking behind some of these decisions that are being made and hopefully know things in the right direction.
Great, looks like we've been through all the introductions, we're still waiting on Sandy, so we're just gonna go ahead and get started and he can join us when he arrives. I first of all just wanted to say good morning and thank you to everyone for joining us. I'd like to thank the councillors who are lending us their ears today. Thank you for recognizing our concerns and for engaging with us. Like I said, my name is Leah, I'm the volunteer coordinator of the Social Justice Cooperative, we're a volunteer-led, member-owned, nonprofit cooperative. We believe in the power of grassroots organizing and we strive to help build, support, grow organizations, networks and coalitions, movements that take action towards social and environmental justice. The Challenging Car Culture Coalition is one of those movements. This brand has been organized by the Challenged Car Culture Coalition, a group that aims to challenge the mindset of cars as default and promote active, accessible and free public transportation in NL. It looks like Sandy has joined us, I'm just gonna mute his mic for a moment because of the audio issues. The Kelly's Brook Trail, which we are discussing today, is the first stage of what is set to become an active and accessible transportation network in our city for both commuting and recreation. It makes a strong statement for the rights of people in our city who are often marginalized because of age, ability or income, and for the city's commitment to active transportation, inclusion, accessibility and responding to the climate emergency. While council agrees in its support of the trail, there is a disagreement concerning whether to commit the funds now or defer them indefinitely while awaiting federal funding. That's the main point of contention that we're going to be talking through today. Two of our organizers Viviana and Elizabeth will get us started with some brief remarks. All participants are then invited to speak about what the trail means for them. Just raise your hand if you know how to do that in the Zoom chat. If you don't, just click the chat button and put an exclamation point in the chat and we'll get you on the speaker's list. Councillors will then be invited to share their positions. For time's sake, we ask that all of us keep our remarks to about 90 seconds and the remaining time will be used for a Q and A. So I'm gonna hand it off to Elizabeth in a moment, but first of all, I just wanted to take a moment to welcome Sandy and thank you for joining us. We've all introduced ourselves, but did you want to take a very quick second to introduce yourself?
Yes, sorry, good morning all, thank you for the invitation. Sorry I'm late, Monday is a crazy day with council and something came up. Please, they're all getting together, I'm pleased with your interest in cycling in the city. And I can guarantee you, I'm an old recreation guy and cycling is key for me as well. And going back to our old plan about seven, eight years ago, one of the key things that happened was the trail along across Columbus Drive and Parkway. Finishing that to the east end has obviously been a priority with me. The new cycling plan was done, that sort of dropped back a little and now Kelly's Brook is number one on the list. And there are other trails that have problems for different reasons, but Kelly's Brook is seen as being one that we can achieve fairly simply in terms of right of way etc. So we're gonna have a go at it. So I'm very interested in what you guys are up to, hoping to clarify a couple of things with you and can assure you of council's full commitment to cycling in the city.
Thank you very much, I will now hand it over to Elizabeth to get us started. Thank you Elizabeth and thank you councillor Hickman.
Okay, well, it's great to see everybody here and especially to see the city councillors here, Hope and Maggie and Sandy, and also great to see Sarah Studley. Thank you so much for coming, I'm glad it was worth my while getting up so early in the morning to talk on the radio. It's nice to meet you. So Leah already made some of the points that I wanted to make, which is great, so I'll be brief to leave lots of time for questions because I know there are lots of questions. So, but I'll just add a little bit more about why the Kelly's Brook Trail is important to what Leah already said about that. I really do think that partly just because it makes a very strong statement, it's really a very tiny part of St. John's overall budget, but makes a very, very strong statement in support of all the things that Leah mentioned to to retain the funding. A little bit more about the climate emergency, which St. John's has declared a climate emergency, as many of you know, and with good reason. So next generation mobility, which includes active transportation, is one of four key areas for reaching reduced, the reduced emissions needed by 2030, so it's very key to that. Another point is that there are many, many walking trails around the city and many of them are very beautiful, if you look at the Grand Concourse map on their website, you can see the whole place and the surrounding areas are covered with wonderful walking trails, but there's very little safe infrastructure for cycling and even less that's accessible for people who use wheelchairs, people who have children in strollers, any kind of device like that. And I've noticed that even there are even a few Grand Concourse trails that have signage saying they're accessible, but in fact, I'm not an expert on this, but I'm quite sure they're not because they have stairs for example. So that's something that's desperately needed. The, people have expressed concerns as well, walkers, some walkers, I'm a walker myself, but some walkers have expressed concerns about the idea of a multi-purpose trail, that it will interfere with their peaceful enjoyment. But there are so many walking trails and we're only talking about a very few. I actually went and cycled the Kelly's Brook Trail yesterday, not sure if it's supposed to be cycled these days, but I noticed there were a lot more bicycles, bicycle riders on it than walkers actually, so it's already been used that way even though it's a narrow, rough trail right now. And it's a, it's a beautiful trail that goes mostly through green spaces, but I don't think it's controversial in terms of its potential to disrupt a very peaceful trail because it mostly runs through playing fields, little green spaces behind neighborhoods and buildings. Another thing I noticed about it is almost flat. So another objection people have to the idea that St. John's could ever be a good city for active transportation, they say, no, it's too hilly, you'll never get people to bike and so on. But east-west is very nearly flat, so yeah, so it's great in that way too. Another point I wanted to make is that research shows, there's lots of research that shows that people are not only healthier, but also happier when they use active transportation. And that actually includes using public transportation because they tend to walk or cycle to get to the public transit. So if we want a healthy and happy population, that's another reason. And finally, we particularly, I would say, as an educator, need safe places for children to be able to bike, roll, wheel, whatever mode of transportation they want to use so that they learn from a young age that this is a normal thing to do. That is a very, very important part of making this city a city where people get around using active transportation. So a decision to fund this now, or to retain the funding now, would be a strong statement in favor of all those values. I think the only other thing I want to say is that there does seem to be some confusion over the deferment of the funding or the retention of the funding. So as both Leah and I have said, retaining it partly is just to make a really strong statement about this and that I think is crucial. But the other question is about whether or not the funding will be available when we get the matching funds from the federal and provincial governments. So I think we'll find out about that shortly. But I want to say that the, there have been, I suspect that councillors have received many, many emails from a lot of people because I know a lot of people are interested in this issue and we've had responses back from several councillors, including the three who are with us this morning and others. And we really appreciate the time that councillors put into getting back to us and giving us information. It's been so helpful and I have to say so heartwarming as well to know that we can communicate with you and hear back from you and have a respectful dialogue. So we've learned a lot from that and we're hoping to learn still more this morning. Thank you very much for your replies and thank you so much for being here with us on this busy day. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Viviana, who has some questions to get us started. So thanks everybody for being here.
Thank you Elizabeth and everyone. Yeah, just, I'm not gonna add much, so they're going to, the two questions that they haven't touched on already. So what I do want to say is that I think the confusion is because a lot of us are not very familiar with the language and decision-making process in council. So over this couple of weeks that a bunch of us have been following up these conversations and yes, we receive emails from councillors and that's great, thank you very much for that. You know, we learned that the Kelly Brook, the Kelly's Brook project is approved and that was part of the confusion, is or is not approved. That the council is waiting for federal funding, they already applied for and hasn't shown up. That there's some municipal funding somewhere and the council is still debating whether that municipal person is, it's approved or not this year. So the question is why some council members seem to think that yes, we can hold that funding and then it can be approved, while some other council members don't think that's possible. So that's what my, those are my words, that's how I'm wording my question. Is it possible or not to approve those, that funding this year? And if it's not approved, how the funding in the next year can be guaranteed? Because we don't want to be doing this again next year, justifying why this is important, repeating over and over again why the benefits, or why are the benefits which all of us know about it. So again, question number one is why the disagreement between some councillors, if the funding can be approved or not this year? And if it's not, how council will guarantee that we're gonna have that funding next year?
Thank you Viviana. I think we'll go next to our three members of council and give them each about 90 seconds, give or take, please be conscious of time, to share with us their positions. Let's go first to Maggie.
Sorry guys, can I go with second, I just got, had to take a phone call really quickly?
Of course, no trouble at all, let's go to Sandy.
Alrighty then, yeah. I think it would probably be better for the other two to be going first here, but I will go ahead anyway. Council, municipal councils are generally responsible for hard services, hard services. We have a very limited mandate, we have very limited funding, we get, I think it's 11% or 8% of the tax dollar. Don't get anything with sales tax or income tax and budgets are tight. We're gonna be saddled now with the table of the harbor, that's gonna pop up taxes significantly once that project's completed for instance. And we're trying to do our best to keep it taxes low to people who own lower level houses etc. Doing our very best to do that, so we had to be very careful. So this year, we're hitting on a very unprecedented situation with the pandemic. We know in the coming years, several years forward, we're gonna have a tough time with our budget. So this year, quite prudently, staff came to us with a list of suggested capital projects, capital out of our current program, current budget by the way, that aren't either, aren't gonna go ahead this year because of delays, pandemic staffing just couldn't be at their desks, couldn't get things done as quickly, I think you all recognize that. So we are behind on some things. We are, and one of those things that was suggested is it, is the funding for the 357 or 373, whatever it is, and I can't remember, for this year's allocation, 2020, towards construction of the Kelly's Brook Trail. That will not happen this year, can't physically happen. And so that was one of the suggested areas that we could save money so that we would have a little more flex in our budget going forward for next year to try and make things match up next year and keep any, hopefully no tax increases next year and try to keep it going forward. So this was just one project of many that was suggested and we had a lot of chat about it. A lot of councillors have really dug their heels in, others have said, look, this is gonna happen anyway next year if the feds come through, this is a 17% of the total cost of project. And whenever we have federal or provincial funds, we obviously take advantage of that. So if we can get, you know, 70 or 80% plus funding for our projects, we will, we will go forward with that. Obviously that would make no sense not to, but that commitment has been made by council, will be honored by council. Going, you know, a new council, some say, well, maybe they won't honor the commitment if it doesn't happen next year. That, that could happen in any case, there's no question, these things happen. But generally councils respect the progress that's been made in an issue, in an area and move forward with a plan with life in the city. I mean, things do progress in this city and I've been very proud of some things that have happened with this council. We've got some great new young members on the council this time, but I think we've made a lot of steps compared to the last council, certainly the two councils though. We are night and day with a lot of engagement and awareness of cycling etc. So I'm quite proud of that. So we're, I'm just speaking on behalf of a bunch of councillors that recognize that we have to undertake this exercise. So we're, I'm just speaking on behalf of a bunch of councillors that recognize that we have to undertake this exercise responsibly. We have set some funds aside that aren't even gonna be spent this year in some cases, for next year to give us budget, budget is a fluid document, no question about it, every year. And we have to react to that going forward. But I can confirm to you that 11 members of council are fully committed to this project and we're all hoping it goes next year, but we all know that we have to get federal funding in order for it to happen. Sorry if I was too long.
Thank you, Sandy. Maggie, would you like to go next?
Thanks, sorry about that, yeah, trying to coordinate childcare on the phone. My daughter is at a play date right now with her double bubble. Yeah, so from my perspective, if we aren't committing the budget money, the budget of money now for Kelly's Brook, then an indefinite deferral means that, you know, the money has to be, like, we have to basically argue for that again next year, because there's a big demand for a lot of different services and we have no idea what the economic recovery period of COVID looks like. So there's gonna be, I think, a lot of unknowns coming at us in the next year and I'm not comfortable with an indefinite deferral. So if we were able to say defer it just for this year and then have it ready to go when the federal funding is announced, I would have been more comfortable with that, but that's just, it's just not the way it is. So I think it's really important that we have the money set aside and approved now, as opposed to putting it back into the general capital list for next year, because we have no idea what's coming. So I think that it's true that all councils support the bike plan, but supporting and financing it are sort of different things. And we have to, you know, we have to recognize that there are a lot of competing priorities in the city and bicycling is, is one of the ones that we need to make sure that moves forward, in my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Maggie. We'll go to Hope next.
Thanks. So Maggie said a lot of what I was gonna say, but I think it's important to understand sort of the mechanics of how all this stuff works. So the bike plan last year was approved unanimously by council, that is true. The public engagement around some of the first projects in the bike plan was approved unanimously in the capital budget of 2019, also true. So that didn't happen last year, that's yet to be done. And the idea is that with the funding from the 2019 capital budget in 2020, the public engagement around the Kelly's Brook Trail will happen. So then this year, we funded the actual shovels in the ground, physical, something you can touch, first project from the bike plan. And so while, so there are examples already of things being funded in prior years that didn't happen, then being carried forward into the following year. Totally normal for a capital budget, there's a lot in there, sometimes things don't happen as fast as we would like them to and our construction season's pretty short. So councillor Hickman is right that even if this funding is retained and the feds show up, it's July. Realistically, this project isn't gonna happen this year. But I share councillor Burton's concern that if we take this out and defer indefinitely, that means that we're not gonna get back to it, because we know that the fiscal forecast for the next few years isn't any better than this one, right? So we have a significant challenge ahead of us and so keeping this money in the budget is important, because it isn't then sensitive to future fluctuations in our economic situation, which we know is gonna be pretty volatile over the coming years. So I think that in terms of sending a message, yes, it's important, but in terms of practically actually getting the thing done, having the money ready to go when the feds do show up, which I believe that they will, is gonna be really important and we want to be able to respond to that very quickly, so that we can get the thing built. Because otherwise, the money that we spent on the bike plan, the money that we're going to spend on public engagement, really, we're throwing good money after bad if we're not going to fund the actual project in the end of all of it, right? So that's some, some points that I didn't hear from my colleagues that I thought were important to the discussion.
Thank you, Hope, and thank you to the three of you for being here and for sharing your views with us. Very helpful. I wanted to open the floor now for any members, any participants in the meeting to either ask a question or share their views and what the bike plan would mean for them and their concerns about moving it forward. We do want to keep it brief, just to get as, get through as much as we can. If you would like to make a remark or ask a question, just put an exclamation point in the chat or raise your hand and I'll call on you to do that. You can also, if no one is jumping in, just unmute yourself and go right ahead.
Maybe the, well, the councillors know, like, when, when do you expect maybe to hear about the federal funding? When we actually will have the, the matching funds? And if it's anytime soon, I realize this project is not gonna happen this summer regardless, but is there any indication of when the funding may come through? And then if it does for sure, then it can, then maybe the matching funding could be set aside to see that the project does in fact go ahead next year?
And did any of the councillors want to respond to that question?
Just a quick comment, we have no idea, of course, with the federal government. Those poor people have big problems of their own budgetary wise. But the money still flows, there's no question, and things can happen. So we all, I think, remain hopeful that we will hear something soon on this, because it was planned that we would hear this, this year, this, you know, as, prior to pandemic. We thought we would have heard by now, but it's something you can't predict. We really do hope though, it's, for them, it's just a small amount of money, for us, it's a huge amount of money and it's so significant, it's so important. So we're hopeful and we will be shovel-ready, I'm sure, by probably March or April, because all the planning's going on, we'll then move into an engineering process, so that will be ready for April. So we will be ready, but yeah, everybody's right, who knows when the feds are gonna come up with their money.
And Hope, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was basically gonna say what Sandy said, we, we have no indication of when just yet. We have asked the question, but we haven't gotten a response.
This is Sarah, I can speak, I guess, to the overall process if that's helpful. So a few months ago, each city and town across the province, because this is the Canada-wide one pot of money, were asked to prioritize projects and there's all kinds of different categories. So I was, I was just looking at the list that City St. John's put forward. I don't think I can share it, but there's, there's essentially 10 big projects on that list and each one has a cost associated with it. And each town and city gets a pot of money, so Town of Paradise got a certain amount, City St. John's got a certain amount, Grand Paulsmans have got a certain amount. And then the city or each municipality prioritizes what their importance are. And then as, my understanding is this happens at a Canada-wide level and there's a big spreadsheet of every town and city across Canada and they're all prioritized and they start, you know, giving out money and then they go down the list. So, so far, I've heard about one successful project in Paradise and one successful project in St. John's. I have not seen the others. And my understanding is though the others are, they're just going to keep, going down through the list. So I'm waiting to hear, I've just asked to make sure I haven't missed this one. And I guess this would be a problem for all municipalities across Canada. So, you know, I'm sure some would not be able to use the funding this year. I'll certainly find out, I'm assuming you'll be able to use it next year. And, I mean, it certainly is worthwhile, because this project, I think, was 2.5 million, but then the city's only responsible, I think, for 30% of that. I can't, I think 30 or 40%, the province is responsible for so much and the federal government is responsible for another portion. Anyway, so I just wanted to highlight, I guess, that overall process that happens across Canada and hopefully will hear soon, if, I guess, councillors, you haven't heard already, because I might have missed this one, but I didn't notice this one yet.
Thank you, Sarah. I guess I could jump in with a question and just please indicate in the chat if anybody has a question. My question is, if council is unanimous in its support of the project and there's room in the budget to dedicate these funds and there's no plan right now to use them on anything else, why not just commit the funds and show the commitment that the plan will go through? And, and the kind of the latter part of that question is, does it send a bad signal to the federal government if the city doesn't commit its funding and pushes that down the road to, for a future council to approve?
I can jump in. I think that it, I was worried that it would send a, a bad signal to the federal government and obviously I'm pretty new to this, so I don't really know what that does to a funding application. This project is very similar to the Halifax Integrated Mobility Plan that they got a lot of cash for in the last couple of years from the federal government and the provincial government there. And I don't see any reason why the feds wouldn't approve it, but we still don't know for sure whether or not they will support it. And to Sarah's point, it's, our contribution is, I think, 377,000. And all in all, all the projects that we're looking at deferring indefinitely also include things like bike counters and pedestrian counters. And, you know, bike racks were, were one of the things that we removed from that deferral list, but could have easily have stayed on there as well. But I think that viewed as a package, the, the list of projects that came forward to council to be asked to be deferred definitely does send the signal that we're not taking active transportation seriously and that's why I was concerned about it in particular. Yeah, so I'm not sure, like, what the federal government's process is for reviewing these applications, but I hope that they, they see the merits in the plan as, as it stands and given that council has been supportive of it. But yeah, I'm also worried about that and I don't have a clear answer and I've not, haven't been able to get a clear answer from, from anybody. I think that some staff at the city are speaking to the federal government today for an update, but I'll, I don't, I'm not sure, absolutely sure about that process or when, when it'll come forward.
Thank you, Maggie. Hope or Sandy, did you have something, Hope, it looks like you have something to add?
So it sounds like you're asking a bit how we got here, Leah, is that true? Yeah, so our fiscal framework is, is pretty constrained, as Sandy pointed out. So we are mandated to run balanced budgets, 77% of our revenues come from property taxes. And especially the commercial assessments depend on commercial activity. So as we're seeing businesses really challenged with COVID, that's presenting a fiscal challenge for municipalities as well, specifically in our really sort of antiquated restrictive framework, asking what I think about that later. So what, the reason this came up in the first place and the capital deferrals, the reason we're having this conversation is because we're looking at somewhat of a budget shortfall, so we need to be finding money wherever we can. But as councillor Burton pointed out, the list of deferrals does, if we speak to our priorities through our budgets, it also shows what drops off the priority list first, right? And it's a lot of the climate change initiatives that we've taken on, the active transportation that we've taken on. So to me, that's problematic, we need to be sort of thinking more creatively and digging deeper and looking at where we can start to tweak things. So yeah, that, that is the worrying part for me. And I share the concern that it sends a message to the feds that this is not a priority for us, which it should be. So yeah, it's a question of, you know, we've, we've approved this and said it's a priority, but are we going to actually back that up with money, which is the thing that actually makes it come to life? So, so to me, that's why it's important to leave that in the budget.
Thank you, Hope. Councillor Hickman?
Quick question, yeah, just wanna say that one thing, it's, this pandemic has done a lot of things terrible and horrible, but one of the good things is it's gotten people active. And I've been impressed with the walking, the hiking, and I've been very impressed and absolutely astounded, to tell you the truth, with the amount of cycling that's going out of this city. So a council somewhat is reactionary to what the needs are and what residents are saying and your group is, one group's saying it, but I think the actions of families and individuals speak pretty loudly. Cycling has now moved up a notch in this city, there's no question about that in my mind. We have to react to that and we have to get this first phased on, so we can move out to the next phase. And that's what's driving me and hopefully, I believe, all councillors have been impressed with, with the need and I see this going forward as soon as the feds come through, where, no matter where the money comes from next year or, or another year, hopefully next year. Thanks.
Thank you. Opening the floor for more questions. Get your questions in.
Elizabeth wants to talk.
Elizabeth, go ahead.
Just to follow up on what Sandy just said. So if the, if the vote this afternoon is, at least I understand it's this afternoon, although I didn't see it on the agenda, so that might be a question too. But if the vote is to defer, then when, how long would it take to get the money back once the federal government does hopefully allocate funds? And what is that process? Like, how much of a delay would it cause, I guess, is my concern, that we have to go to some other budget?
I can answer that. So it's an indefinite deferral, which means that there's no guarantee that we're gonna see this next year or, or ever again. The idea, though, is that it would be deferred until the feds show up with the money. So at the soonest this would happen would be in the 2021 season, that's the best we could hope for, but it remains unclear whether that will or will not come to pass. And it is, it's in the agenda under the committee of the whole report from 10 days ago, that's where you can find it.
Thank you. Any of our other councillors want to speak to that?
Oh, just quickly, like, again, budgeting is fluid and what we're doing and what we have done has gone through an exercise to find some savings out of capital out of current. And now we're also talking about open space, we have an open space reserve fund, which is, builds up with every development fee that's paid and that's something that we then use for, has to be used for recreation facilities. So that's a little bonus thing that we have tucked away. Then that's the kind of thing that we're talking about where these funds could come from as soon as the feds come through with, with their money.
With, you know, the fact that we approved the bike plan, we also have approved a lot of other plans that haven't necessarily had all their projects financed before. So even like the Parks and Open Spaces master plan, it serves as a guiding document when funds are available. But like, we know, I know some of you are, are involved in the discussions around sidewalks, snow clearing, for example. We're gonna have more and more requests come forward for increased budget, for reallocation of resources, for reconsidering what our priorities look like in the city to help people get around. And I'm worried that unless we approve the bike plan, 377,000 contribution now, it will be lumped into the other stuff like increasing sidewalk snow clearing and we'll end up sort of fighting for scraps instead of trying to get these catalyst projects done. So that's not a direct answer to the, to the question, Elizabeth, I'm sorry, but that's, that's another thought that I just had.
Thank you, Maggie. And thank you, Sandy and Hope. Next, we'll go to Megan Hollitt, she has her hand raised with a question.
Thanks, Leah, I just wanted to ask or just make some comments as well. I know we're talking about how tight the budget is for the city and I understand it's not a sexy thing that people like to think about, but I understand that every single thing has a dollar sign behind it, no matter what it is. And that's a tough pill to fall, to swallow for sure for some people and I certainly understand it. At the same time, I think we also have to think about the individual impact. So if we're not having bike lanes that are accessible for people, we have to think about every single person that is using a car, that is paying for gas, that is paying for insurance. We're not necessarily thinking about that as, as it's hitting every single family as well. And that's not a collectively absorbed budgetary issue there. So I want us to be considering that for sure. And as some of the councillors have mentioned in the past, this isn't about like cars, necessarily cars versus people, not everybody has a car. Not everybody has that piece to get around. And we've heard that in council chambers and I really do appreciate it and we have to be thinking about that. This isn't an option, this isn't something nice, this is a necessary thing for some people. So who are we discounting, who are we excluding from getting around our city? I also want us to think about the fact that if we have been seeing through COVID that there's a general uptick in active transportation and that could be scooters, that could be bikes, that could be walking globally, of course, it's not just St. John's. St. John's has a chance to be just as sexy as any other city that we're seeing right now or that we're reading about articles. We can continue to flow and be just as sexy equal as all the other cities and compete with other cities as well, if we continue to prioritize this, not fall behind and hope that maybe the next council that'll get voted in a year will also choose to believe in this. So I think that this is a big thing that the current day council can decide and put forward. So I think that this is a big thing that the current day council can decide and put forward and make that mark and an investment in the future. I do have some questions outside of Kelly's Brook, but I realize that this particular piece is about Kelly's Brook. So I can leave that, if there is time later, I'd like to ask questions about the current pedestrian path that we do have that is not around Kelly's Brook.
Thanks, Megan. I just wanted to see if any of our councillors wanted to respond to your comments.
Can I? Yeah, so Megan, you might be familiar with the affordable housing strategy, which does reference transportation as a function of affordability. So it's another place that the city has recognized that active transportation is an important piece of quality of life living in the city. And I've heard from so many people that this is a huge financial issue for their families is having to own a car, pay for gas, all of the costs that are associated with that, or God forbid, own two cars in order to function. It is ridiculous that every adult human who lives in St. John's should feel that they need to own a car in order to exist. And this is an opportunity, like you said, like with, with COVID, we've changed some of our habits. And it's an opportunity for us to course correct in a way when we have decades of urban planning that has centered the car, the personal vehicle as, as a way of getting around. I think it's an opportunity for us to think about how we might start to do that differently. But we need to prioritize that with our budgets, like I said. So thank you for that. I, yes, I, all those things, yes.
We've got about 10 minutes to go. I'm not sure, Elizabeth, if you had a question. I know David's hand is up, so I want to get to him. But did councillor Hickman or councillor Burton have any quick comments on, on what Megan brought up?
I'm just saying 100% agree with her that, you know, people need to be out moving or walking, and that trend seems to be happening. A municipal council must recognize that, and I think we have. Thank you.
Yeah, from, from my perspective, you know, the cost, we, we talk about keeping taxes the same with the rising cost of services through the COVID recovery period. But owning a car is, costs way more than a yearly municipal tax bill. So I do think that it's important to see it as like a total sort of value added to people's lives as opposed to just a financial bottom line of, you know, we want to keep taxes the same so we won't create infrastructure right now because it's not urgent. Whereas in reality, it can really save money for the people in the city to not have to own a car. And it could make the difference between owning one car and owning two cars. So if you, if you decide that, you know, you've got a new job in Mount Pearl and you need to buy a second vehicle to, to get there or something like that from downtown, then that's, you know, that adds another, another total cost to, to someone's life that may be avoidable through the bike plan.
Thank you. David, you're next with your question.
Yeah, I wasn't entirely clear whether the list of projects recommended, the list from which the project recommended for deferral was made, represented every capital project that was on the go for, for the applicable year. And I was wanting to know particularly, like, why was it, why was it not considered possible to look at pairing some of the larger items down a little rather than taking out entire items? Like, for example, maybe some of the various city buildings for half a million dollars. One might get a little less maintenance and, you know, pair 50,000 off there or sidewalk repair or, you know, the obvious one is grind and patch. I know that during discussion there was, well, we shouldn't touch grind and patch to make it political, well, fine. But as one of the staff said, if we had double the amount of money, we would do double the work. If we said you only have 15, you know, 1.5 million, could the city not in an equitable fashion figure out how to make do with 1.5 million dollars? Is that not a viable alternative? And I guess the last thing I would just ask is, is why is this being done or proposed now? Is there anybody who's come to the city and said, we need to see a, you know, we're concerned about your fiscal status. We need to see some action demonstrating your willingness to make some cuts. So let's, you know, do that. Would it not make more sense to wait and see how things are going to pan out? We, we have not reached, we're still in the, very much in the middle of all this. Should we not see how things look in six months or a year and make some more well thought through decisions then?
Thank you, David. Let's throw that out to our councillors.
So, okay, a lot in there. Going to try and answer all those questions. So a lot of what wasn't recommended for deferral is funds already committed. So some of the money in the capital budget, which we did early in the year, had already been spent. We did look at grind and patch and seeing if we could pare it down, not because it wasn't, we didn't want to make it political. We chose not to do that, but because it's preventative maintenance. And if we don't spend the money this year, we're going to have to spend more money next year. So that was the reason for leaving that where it's to. And again, like a lot of the other stuff in the budget, we had already dispersed those funds. So those things weren't able to be stopped at this point. Yes, the situation remains dynamic. However, we have already taken a bunch of actions which we know will have financial consequences down the road. So the property tax deferrals that we've taken on until the very end of the year is a, or rather, the interest deferrals on the property taxes, you need to be specific about that, that we've taken on. We know there's a significant fiscal impact with that, delaying the fee increase at Robin Hood Bay. We know the fiscal impact of that. So we do know that we're looking at being short money at the end of the year. We have capital reserves, which it would be irresponsible for us to drain completely and leave empty for future crises. We know that there's a financial impact from COVID. So we do have a lot of the facts in hand. So it was in us looking at our own fiscal situation, not from outside pressure, that we went, okay, we need to do something about this.
Thank you, councillor Jameson. Councillor Burton or Hickman?
Yeah, I think councillor Jameson had a good summary there. I think the idea is to try to create breathing room so that when things come up, when, you know, we, we do anticipate big, you know, additional costs in some of our fixed cost areas because of, you know, for example, lack of events at mile one or something like that. We don't really know the, the total, the impact that COVID is going to have. So we're trying to create that flexibility because we have such a constraint to have a zero, like a balanced budget. We can't run a deficit. So that's, that's certainly, you know, a big aspect of it. But there were a lot of things in that list of deferred items that, you know, that I would have liked to see continue. For example, the wetland phase two study project. But I was confident that, that we had a good alternative plan put in place for that for the next year. As opposed to with the bike plan, there was just a sort of do or do not do with, you know, securing the funding. So I think that not all projects on that chopping block were the same in terms of, like, confirmed funding or something that's already been started, like councillor Jameson said. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty complicated. And I, to David's question about, you know, why are we talking about this now? I think it's, you know, we're looking at that interest fee period, talking about, you know, are we going to get the same, the 77% of our revenue comes from property taxes? Will that go down or up? Or, you know, we know it's going down. So what do we do about that? Anyway, that's, that's why I think. But councillor Lane is the lead for finance. If people have specific questions about it, you could probably ask him.
Yeah, well, submitted both of you. And yeah, David, this is an internal exercise. Our staff have become concerned. They, they brought this forward. Council agrees. We've got to try and be responsible moving forward and do the best we can to have some reserves set aside to try and give us flex for the end of this year and moving into next year, certainly.
Thank you all very much. We've got our last couple of minutes. I don't know if anyone has any closing or final thoughts. I wanted to give our organizers, Viviana and Elizabeth, a chance to make some closing remarks as well. And yeah, I don't know if it's any clearer to me how this is all going to play out, but I really do appreciate hearing everyone's thoughts on it. And, and I do hope personally that that council is able to commit this funding. Megan, I think, has her hand raised.
I just want to say huge kudos to the City St. John's for what has been done with the pedestrian mall. I think that's an excellent example of how we can promote active transportation in the city. Businesses are being visited. We're being sought. I think that's a great idea. I think the city looks excellent. Tons of positive comments are being made. And I think the same thing can be done with bike paths. I don't think it has to be scary.
Thanks, Megan. Viviana?
Well, no, thank you so much for this, for attending, for sharing. I really hope the funding is going to be secured. I really hope that. And thank you. That's it.
Elizabeth, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just the same hope as Viviana, when I, yeah, it, it's just such an important thing for so many people. It will help people in so many ways. So yeah, just the hope that, that council will make a firm commitment to this today. And thank you all for coming, and especially again, the councillors and Sarah as MHA. Thank you so much.
Just wanted to echo Elizabeth's thanks and, yeah, hope that we can continue our engagement and continue challenging the things we think of as optional versus the things we think of as mandatory. Because I think a lot of us agree that, that this is mandatory. I know we're at 11. Did any of our councillors want to throw out some closing remarks before we all sign off? Also, Ben Cleary is here from NTV, and he's going to do an interview with Viviana after we close out. Elizabeth, if you'd like to stick around, that'd be great too. Anyone else who'd like to stick around, talk to Ben, are certainly welcome to do so. Councillor Hickman, do you have any closing remarks?
Yes, thank you again for the opportunity, Viviana Elizabeth, for putting us together. And I really appreciate the interest of everyone in your time. And I'm really with you 100% when it comes to cycling. As I said, it's, my background is in recreation and physical activity, and cycling is moving up even more than ever. And we have to honor that as a council. And I would say too, Sarah, still, thank you for being here, Sarah. We need our MHAs. And to all of you people, we need our MHAs onsite with the city. We need the government's support. We have one fifth the population. It would be great if we got anywhere near that in terms of our share of capital over the years. But we need Sarah here listening to us and fighting for us. And thank you again, Sarah. Again, thank you all of you.
Thank you, councillor Hickman. Thank you, Sarah. Councillor Burton, do you have any closing remarks?
Yeah, sure. I guess, like, I also, I'm very concerned about, about this, making sure that we get the funding earmarked. And we are looking at ways to, you know, to, to confirm that we can access that money when it's needed. But I, you know, unfortunately, I don't have a great answer at this point about how that can happen. But we are, you know, we're, we're looking, we're looking at all the options for sure. And like, like some of you might have noticed, we talked about using the Parks and Open Spaces Reserve Fund from the development fees. So there are other options outside the capital budget. But, you know, at this point, the, the vote today will be on whether or not to take it out of the capital budget and, and defer it indefinitely. But, you know, I hope that we can find the money somewhere if we get the federal approval, regardless of what happens today. So we'll, you know, forever the optimist, continue trying. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Burton. Councillor Jameson?
Thanks. And I just wanted to say thank you for having us and thank you for organizing this and showing up today. It's, it's heartening to see that people care about this as, as much as I do. And I would encourage you to continue the conversation regardless of what happens today, especially with those councillors who might be more skeptical that cycling is in fact a priority for the residents of St. John's. I think we spend a lot of time sort of talking to each other and agreeing with each other. But I think it's important also work in a spirit of collaboration with people who might feel differently. So I would encourage you all to stay engaged and stay passionate about this. And, and thanks very much again.
Thank you, councillor Jameson. We'll close it out. If anyone wants to get more involved or has any questions, email socialjusticecoop nl@gmail.com. I will also put that in the chat. And thank you all for coming. And if you want to stick around to chat with Ben, you're more than welcome to do so. This has been great. I have learned a lot and, and am very heartened to, to see the commitment and, and the willingness to engage from our councillors. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Bye.
Bye.
Ciao. Get outside.
Nice to see you, Mike.
Nice to meet you as well, Viviana.
Thanks, everybody. All right. Ben, we're going to need another call or something, or this is, this can go for?
Just waiting to see.
Something, or maybe Ben can call me, or, or we create another link or something? I don't know.
Just waiting to see. I know Ben said that he was on a work computer that didn't have a microphone. So maybe he will type something to us. I did let him know that you were able to be interviewed after the meeting, and he said that sounded great.
Sorry for telling Ben how to work his mic. I didn't make the connection that he was from NTV.
It's a good point that we should turn off the live feed right now.
Right. Always happens. All right, everyone. We'll be in touch. We'll see what happens and keep working, keep fighting. Thank you all. So we don't need to stick around now to talk to Ben, or I'm not clear on that? I just gave him my number. Okay, he's there. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your patience. So I'll ask him, or maybe he has me, anybody else wants to talk to him and I'll contact you. Oh, wait, I sent that to, I meant to send that to him.
Okay, he's going to give you a quick call, Viviana.
I quickly want to add my comments that this was amazing and I learned so much and I can't wait to do it again. And I would like to point out that councillor Hickman keeps adding the word recreation to this kind of bike plan thing. This is not recreation. This is priority and this is transportation. Huh, thank you so much. Goodbye.
Yes, excellent. Okay, I'm gonna.
I'm out. I was just trying to make sure that I copied some of the stuff from the chat before it all disappeared off my screen, so.
No worries.
So you don't need me here anymore, or I'm not quite sure?
I.
I don't think, Ben is saying, I'll give Angela, let's be here. Yeah, so you will talk to Viviana and I'm. You're going to have, or me. Okay.
Keep up the good fight.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Bye. We'll be in touch.
Okay, bye bye, everyone.